Good afternoon. Glad to have you here. I'm Lisa Raym, host and senior producer for Morning Edition on W A B E. Welcome to the Atlanta Press Club Louder Milk Young Debate Series. This is the debate among candidates for city council president. So let's meet the candidates. They are in alphabetical order. Nadalyn Archibong has served on the Atlanta City Council representing District 5 since 2011. Courtney English served two terms as Chair of the Atlanta Public School Board and is currently Director of Community Redevelopment, or Community Development, rather, for an affordable housing and education nonprofit. Sam Manuel is a member of several unions, including the United Steel Workers Union and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. Mike Russell is a law enforcement officer and served in the U.S. Army for 28 years. And Doug Shipman is the former CEO of the Woodruff Arts Center and was founding CEO for the National Center for Civil and Human Rights. Welcome all of you. Now let's meet our panelists. Ricky Klaus is a producer with Georgia Public Broadcasting. And John Roush is a journalist for Support a Report. For complete rules on today's debate, please visit the Atlanta Press Club website, atlantapressclub.org. Now, to start the debate, each candidate will be asked one question by one of the panelists. Candidates have 60 seconds to answer each question. Ricky Klaus, we begin with you. You get the first question to Nadalyn Archibong.
Nadalyn, you have served as the Atlanta City Council District 5 representative for the last 20 years. How has the work being part of the city council changed over those two decades? And how have you changed as a civil servant?
Thank you so much for that question. In 20 years, a lot has happened. When I initially took office, we weren't as focused on social media, the email exchanges. We had actually people coming down to meet with us and writing old fashioned letters. But the beauty of that was that we were connecting with people. Now that we have moved for a period now where there's more social media, where we've had the COVID interruption of our day to day activities, we are more and more reliant upon our internet and our ability to connect with voters in unique ways. And that has been very exciting and it has resulted in more engagement, which has been really good. The issues have changed as well. Gentrification has been an issue that has plagued our city and having that as an issue became a challenge that we had to address. And we have worked incrementally to improve that, to make sure that we don't lose our legacy families as we continue to welcome our new and our growth. Thank you.
Thank you for your response there. John Roush, please ask your question to Doug Shipman.
Doug, your biography mentions that you got a master's degree in theology at Harvard. What was your area of focus in those studies and how does that inform your leadership?
So I did get a master's of theology and I studied the social movements and the religious overlap. So I studied Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I studied Mahatma Gandhi. I studied how folks bring religion into social movements. And when I came to Atlanta and was handpicked by then Mayor Shirley Franklin to lead the National Center for Civil and Human Rights, all of that theology came in handy. In addition, I'm a PK, I'm a preacher's kid. And so the combination of those two things, I think, really allowed me to understand a lot of the historical figures and understand where they had come from, like Joseph Lowry and others, and really bring that center to life. I think also it has given me ways to understand where we have moral questions. A lot of times leadership is about how we think about things in a moral framework. And so I've tried to use that divinity experience and my own faith experience to bring people together, especially along the lines of religion.
Thank you for your answer. Ricky Klaus, your next question is for Courtney English.
Courtney, in your launch video, you say your mom instructed you, growing up here in Atlanta, to leave things better than you found them. If you were elected city council president, how would you leave Atlanta better than you found it?
Thank you so much for the question and thank you for the opportunity to talk about issues facing this great city. Look, Atlanta is facing a crisis of conscience and a crisis of leadership right now. Housing prices are on the rise, gaps in city services are on the rise, and crime is on the rise. And so we, right now, in this moment, we need leadership that acts and moves with urgency to address those three critical issues. Crime will be down. We're going to build or create an affordable Atlanta that works for everyone. And we're going to ensure that our city government is taking care of the basics, like picking up trash, filling potholes, and ensuring that everyone throughout this city can live a choice filled life.
Thank you. John, it's your turn to ask a question of Mike Russell.
Mike, your campaign website criticizes divisive leadership on race relations and says that young black males commit most violent crimes. How would you address race relations and what is your interpretation of young black males' involvement in crime?
Well, thank you for the question and I'm very grateful to be here. It is a fact in our city that most of the victims of violent crime are black. And many of the perpetrators are also black. And in my experience as a police officer, I've learned there are three ways, three categories of dealing with crime. You just don't lock everybody up to solve the crime problem. There has to be prevention. And that's why I have my good friend in the audience with me today, Martin Fontaine, from the Police Doctor, who, we are already working to turn this around. I'm not waiting till I get in office to turn it around. I'm doing something now to work with our youth so that they never enter into that system. Because we all are responsible for what happens to our youth here in this city. And I'm a person of action and I'm already taking action to get this system turned around for all of us, starting with our children.
Thank you. Ricky, you get the final question in this round and it's for Sam Manuel.
Sam, you're running as a Socialist Workers Party candidate. Describe the pillars of that party and how that would inform your policy and leadership if you were elected city council president.
Thank you for mentioning that. I don't have to use time to explain that I'm the Socialist Workers Party candidate. Our party starts with the idea that there's not one Atlanta. There's an Atlanta of the wealthy in this city. And then there's an Atlanta of working people and they have very different interests. And we put forward a campaign that speaks to the interests of working people. How to begin to organize effectively to defend the bosses assault on our wages, on our working conditions on the job, the need for safety on the job. And we point to, this is not just a set of proposals and ideas, but it's a course for organization that starts with working people, not legislators, not turning things over to them to solve the problem. And the labor movement becomes a very important component of that. That's why I spent much of this campaign joining workers on the picket line in the fights they were involved in.
Thanks to all of you. That concludes the first round of the debate. The candidates will now ask a question to an opponent of their choice. Each candidate will have 30 seconds to ask the question, 60 seconds to respond, and the candidate who asks the question will have 30 seconds for a rebuttal. By random selection, Doug Shipman, you ask the first question.
Thank you. I've talked to thousands of voters over the course of this campaign and many have talked to me about their frustrations around the city just not working, yard trimmings not being picked up, money being sent back that's been unspent. Ms. Archibong, you talk a lot about your record, but that record is one that's problematic. You've had unlawful ethics violations dealing with your family and the city. And you have also had issues around task forces that you've led. 2013, you led a sidewalk task force. Eight years later, our sidewalks are still a mess. My question is one a voter put to me. Why should we give a promotion to someone who hasn't done a good job?
The question is fair from the vantage point of someone who's served for 20 years does have a record, but also have a record of accomplishments. The better question is, why give the job to a novice? Why give the job to someone with no experience? I have had a number of successes. If you've been to the Edgewood Retail District, that's my work. If you've driven down Memorial Drive and you've seen the reversible lane, the suicide lane removed, that was my work. The million dollars of sidewalk improvements along Memorial Drive and other corridors, that's my work. Two LED certified new fire stations, that's my work. Two new public libraries, that's my work. Anybody can take a snapshot and throw rocks. I've done hard work. I am proud of my record. I deserve to serve the constituents that have allowed me to serve them for the past 20 years. This is a promotion that should be won by someone who knows how to serve. I do know how to serve.
Doug Shipman, you have 30 seconds.
I think that I've heard very clearly from so many voters that fresh leadership to make sure that our city is actually working again is what we need. We know we face so many challenges and too often, the city hasn't been responsive, the city hasn't fixed the things that we have asked for. We really have just seen a city in which we're doubting what our future looks like. I believe that my experience of getting things done and of bringing a fresh perspective is exactly what folks are asking for right now at City Hall.
Thanks to both of you. Mike Russell, you get the next question. Choose your opponent.
I would like to ask a question of my friend, Sam Manuel. You know, he and I are the only two on this platform that are not a member of the establishment in this city. And I'd like to ask you, as an experienced law enforcement officer, I've learned that there are three elements to solving crime, starting with prevention for our kids. And the way that we solve crime is to have a wraparound holistic approach to reducing crime in our city and on our streets.
Please get to the question.
I will, if you allow me to. Would you agree with that, that to solve crime, we need to have a holistic approach to address this situation?
Well, as I've said in many of these debates, and Mike has heard me say this before, crime is a product of the system that we live in under, the system of profit, which places profits ahead of the needs of working people. 5,000 people lost their lives, I believe in 2015, the last time the census record was kept, on the job. Those were deaths that were preventable and deaths that were motivated by and were the result of the profit drive of the bosses, who were cutting safety conditions for workers and all kinds of other things. Another 20,000 people, I think, were injured, seriously injured on the job, to the degree that they were, had to miss work. These types of things are not being talked about that working people face until we begin to confront the capitalist system itself.
Mr. Manuel, excuse me, your time is up.
We can't begin to change things.
Mr. Russell, you have 30 seconds to respond if you choose.
Thank you. Well, as an experienced law enforcement officer, in fact, the only person on this stage that has ever done anything for law enforcement, I bring the experience here to help get the crime under control in our city. It is the number one problem that we all face. We're all equal when it comes to crime. And I want to bring my years of experience to bear here in Atlanta so that we do have a complete, whole, wraparound system to address the issues that are facing each and every one of us in this city.
Thank you so much for your response. 30 seconds is the magic number to get to your question. Courtney English, it's your turn to question one of your opponents.
Thank you so much. My question is for Doug Shipman. Doug, when you launched your campaign, one of the things that you said that you were inspired to run was the Black Lives Matter movement and the protests that happened last year after the death of George Floyd. Your campaign materials are littered with civil rights heroes, two of which are no longer with us, one of which Shirley Franklin is supporting my campaign. And my question is, you have also led an organization, the Woodruff Arts Center, that is shockingly not representative of the diversity of our city. My question is, do you believe, honestly believe, that the best thing you can do for black lives is to further displace black leadership?
Well, I appreciate the question. When I was hired to lead the Woodruff Arts Center, I was hired to make it work better financially and I was also hired to try to open it up. The Woodruff Arts Center hasn't looked like the whole city for too long. We brought in diverse board members. I made sure that we had outreach to artists of color. In fact, the High Museum has more than two thirds of its artists now are, who are displayed in special collections, are either in people of color or women or LGBTQ artists. I believe that we need leadership that is actually invested in making sure that we don't have 25% poverty, like we did coming into COVID, that we have leadership that is willing to have very hard conversations. And I believe that my history as someone who was white, humbly leading the building of the National Center for Civil and Human Rights, protecting the legacy of the King Papers, shows that I have the leadership that can bring everyone together and that's what we need.
Courtney English, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Certainly. I believe that for far too long, Atlanta has been a tale of two cities. When we think about the issues that impact the city, this city, issues around equity, issues of affordable housing, public safety, education, so on and so forth, they have disproportionately impacted black and brown people of this city. And so I think now is a time where we have to get serious about the equity question. Now is a time where we need leadership with demonstrated capacity and track record of bringing people together from all walks of life to end the tale of two cities once and for all in the city of Atlanta.
Thank you. Sam Manuel, 30 seconds to ask a question.
I'll ask my question to Mr. English. Part of what I've raised in this campaign as a proposal to unite working people in fighting for our interests is the demand for amnesty for undocumented workers. We saw what took place on the border and how Haitian workers and other immigrant workers have been treated. Amnesty would help to ensure the rights of these workers. So I'd like to ask you, what proposals you have on this?
Well, I appreciate the question. I believe that Atlanta specifically should be a safe and welcoming place for all. I believe that we have to create atmospheres where immigrants, where folks who are moving to this city, where folks who have come to this great country of ours and might not have legal status should be able to stay. I believe that we have to find a pathway to citizenship. I believe that the city of Atlanta particularly has a track record of opening its arms and opening its heart to people all throughout the world. I stand on that track record and I will do everything I can to make sure that those folks are taken care of.
Mr. Manuel, you have 30 seconds to respond.
But specifically, my proposal was for amnesty. Some people may want to become citizens, some others may not. How do we protect, how do we broadly protect the rights of these workers and lay the basis for working people? To have equality on the job, that workers who may be from another country and don't have proper documentation will be able to not fear that the bosses will take action against them because of the position that they're in. And I think amnesty is the proposal, is the course.
Mr. Manuel, thank you so much. You are out of time. Nadalyn Archibong, you get the final question. Choose your opponent.
This question is for Mr. Russell. It's a twofer. The first part is a yes or a no and the second part. So in the first part, are you related to the late, great Herman Russell? Are you his son, Mike Russell?
No.
Second part, you have been saying a lot of things about our city. You've been saying how many things are wrong and how many things you can't believe. And you know, I had a college professor to say to me once that it is easy to have an opinion about something when you know very little about it. You haven't been here very long. Is my professor correct?
I've been in this city because I chose to come to this city. And I'm in this race to make this a better city. Of all the things that are facing our city today, I have the skillset more than anybody on this stage to handle them, starting with crime, law enforcement, city management, being responsible and careful with your tax dollars. That's why I'm in this race. I'm a leader that is about results, not the rhetoric. We can sit here and play petty games and name call, but that doesn't help anybody. I'm here because I want to be your next city council president. I want to make this city safer and better for everybody. And I'm asking you to help us change direction. When you go in that voting booth, check Mike Russell for change.
Ms. Archibong, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you. As I've been on the campaign trail, I've heard a lot that's been wrong with the city. But I can tell you, after having served as long as I have, that we have a great opportunity here to elect a leader who knows how to get the accomplishments that you deserve. And so complaining and throwing rocks and showing all the things that are wrong doesn't help. And I haven't seen any of the people here today at City Hall trying to help. I have been actually helping and I want to continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses. That concludes our second round. For those just joining us, this is the debate between candidates for Atlanta City Council President. We will now go back to the panel to ask questions to the candidates of their choice until we run out of time. As a point of moderator privilege, I may also ask questions of the candidates and I will determine when a rebuttal is appropriate. John Roush, you get the first question in this round.
This question goes to all the candidates. We'll start with Doug Shipman. One duty of the council president is to serve as acting mayor if the incumbent dies or otherwise leaves office. This is not a completely theoretical idea in a time of a pandemic and a mayoral candidate under federal indictment, among other examples. How are you qualified and prepared to serve as the mayor of Atlanta?
Thanks, John. Heaven forbid that that would actually happen. But as someone who has three times been the CEO of organizations in Atlanta, major organizations, I would first come in and stabilize the situation. I would make sure that all of the leadership was in place that we needed. I would make sure that citizens knew the process and that we had a clear transition. And then I would understand, as I have in every leadership role that I've taken, I would understand where we are, what are the most pressing priorities. Obviously, as city council president, I would know many of those. But I would want to understand how people are feeling inside of the administration and outside. And I would use all of my leadership experience, taking organizations through crises and taking organizations through growth, to make sure the city kept moving in the ways that people need it. We would have to make sure that the city didn't stop working, but that it continued to work through what everyone would perceive as a very, very tough time.
Thank you. Mike Russell, will you answer the same question?
Yes, I've led many large, complicated organizations around the world. I've been a negotiator from the tribal level to the international level. I've actually provided outstanding city services to residents before. I've done all those things in addition to law enforcement. So I believe I have the skillset more than anybody else on this platform to carry the city forward if we should be in such a crisis. I've lived in crisis as a soldier. I know how to do that. It takes a lot. It takes team building. It takes determined leadership. I possess those things and I would do that also as mayor. I want to say to the citizens of Atlanta, this is a crossroad for change. Whoever the mayor is, it is time that we improve this city for you. And that is why I'm in the race. Whether I become mayor or remain a city council president, my role in this race is to make this city start working for you.
Thank you. Sam Manuel?
Well, my qualifications can be explained by me, but by my experiences. I've had almost half century now involvement in labor struggles, in the steelworkers, in the railroad workers union, was involved in the anti-apartheid movement in this country to bring down the oppressive regime that existed in South Africa. I've had a chance to travel extensively throughout the continent. The main thing is that in doing that, I worked with other fighters. We didn't look for, look to the legislative bodies of these capitalist candidates who really represent the interests of the wealthy in this country to solve things. We began to organize people to do that. And it's through the course of that that people can raise their fighting capacity, their self-confidence, and their ability to have a direct effect and bring about social change. And that's what I would do, whether I was mayor, whether I was president of the city council, or not.
Sam Manuel, you are out of time. Please excuse me. Thank you for your response. Courtney English, will you answer the question?
Certainly. Well, as the only candidate on this stage that has actually ever run and won and held citywide office, is the only candidate on this stage that has actually led a major government organization through crises, is the only candidate in this stage, on this stage, who has helped to turn around, who has faced down large scale challenges throughout this city. Look, I have what it takes to lead this city forward because I've done it before. Atlanta Public Schools was in crisis. And after years of perseverance, we rolled up our sleeves, we increased our graduation rates to a record high, we put more money into the classroom than ever before, and we sent more kids off to college. This city right now is in a crisis. And right now, you need an individual who, leading this city, either as mayor, as council president, who knows how to weather the storm. Citizens of Atlanta know I can do that because I've done it before. And once it's City Hall, together, we will do it again.
Thank you. Nadalyn Archibong, please answer the question.
Thank you. Imagine that dreadful day when we are in a crisis of leadership. I, as council president, would have already served for many terms on the legislative body. They would know me, they would trust me, there would be stability and the recognition that at least we wouldn't have someone trying to find out where the bathroom is in the face of a crisis. I have that legislative experience. I have served through five different terms of different mayors. I understand the executive branch as well. So stability in times of crisis is important. I have voted on, vetted, considered all the personnel papers that have happened. So I know the bureaucracy. For you, the citizens, I know you. To be elected five times, I have to know you and you have to know me. And it will be a challenging time, but we will navigate together with experienced, steady, trusted leadership. Thank you.
Thank you all. Ricky, it's your turn to ask the next question.
So again, this question is for each of you and we'll begin with Doug Shipman as well. So you get elected as city council president, what is the first political action you take?
So the first political action, we will know who the new mayor is and who the new city council president is in early December after the runoffs. I would use that first month between early December and inauguration in early January to meet with all of the new council members, we will have several, the new mayor, and to understand their priorities, to understand what it is that they feel like they've been called to do by the voters and to share what I've heard from the voters and what the priorities are, so that we would have a roadmap, an initial roadmap for change. And then second, upon initially taking over as city council president, I would want us very quickly to move towards greater transparency and a greater understanding of how money's being spent and how services are being delivered. Too often, over the course of the last few years, with workforce training dollars that had to be sent back to the federal government, or with money for those living with HIV that somehow can't get out of the bureaucracy of City Hall, we have failed the citizens. And so my first actions would really be around those transparency issues.
Thank you. Mike Russell, please answer the question.
So I would get to work right away, building a team between all the agencies, the city council, the mayor, the DA and others, to solve the number one problem in our city today that all of us face, and that is crime. I've already started building two pieces of legislation that I would like the council to present unanimously. The first one is to shut down these troublesome venues where a lot of the crime emanates. Because right now, it's a joke. They stay open, they get fined, they don't care. Under my proposal, after they have a couple of violations, a reasonable number of violations, they will be shut down and padlocked until they go to court or the review board. The next thing I would do is toughen up the laws for breaking into automobiles. We have over 10,000 car break-ins this year. The sheriff's car was broken into. We need to make that a serious crime so it stops and people stop going into cars shopping for guns because that leads directly to gun violence on our streets. We can do this, we can do it together. I'm offering you the leadership to get it done.
Sam Manuel, will you please answer the question?
Well, I would say to working people that there is no Atlanta solution to the challenges that we face. It requires working people working across this country and internationally to begin to challenge the profit system that continues to wreak havoc upon us. One of the first things I would do is try to call together all the unions and organized and unorganized working people to discuss a proposal that we have in our campaign platform for a federally funded jobs program that can begin to put millions of people back to work, building the bridges, building the schools, the hospitals, and union scale wages that we need, something that the labor movement can lead a fight for. We've talked a lot about affordable housing. And when I walk around this city campaigning door to door, we're often struck by the dilapidated housing that existed. Well, we can have, we can attack affordable housing through doing this, putting people to work.
Mr. Manuel, my apologies. You are out of time. Courtney English, it is your turn to answer the question.
Absolutely. Upon being elected city council president, we're going to work really, really hard and really, really fast to meet with all the other elected members of council, including the mayor's office. We're also going to meet with the DA, the Fulton County Sheriff, and all members necessary to get our arms around this crime issue. We're going to understand the issues that are taking place that transcend council districts that are contributory to the crime problem. And then we're going to develop what I call a North Star. And that is, that will be held up as the goal in which we want to reach, which is always the same. And that is, that will be held up as the goal in which we want to reach, which is ultimately reducing crime. But we're going to do it in a way that takes into account the voices of the community and of the individuals who've been elected to serve throughout these various districts. Once we do that, we will then move to develop a policy legislative agenda. And on day one, upon being sworn in, we will act with urgency to get that agenda done.
Thank you. Nadine Archibong, please answer the question.
Thank you. Because of our new voting law, by the end of November, we will know who will be our mayor, our council president, and our council district representatives. In December, I will hold a meeting with all of the council members because we have all been out on the campaign trail. We have all heard from you. It's time now to translate that conversation and that talk into action. As a council, only the zoning issues will carry over to the new term. It will be a complete reset legislatively. The council president can introduce no legislation, but I can navigate and help convince and work with colleagues to identify those next steps, given our conversations with all of you all these weeks and months. We'll also meet with the mayor because the policy direction of the city will be set by the council but will be carried out through the mayor. There's got to be a partnership there. Those would be my first action steps. Thank you.
Thank you all. We've heard a lot about trust and transparency during this election season. I'd like to ask all of you, what would that look like as council president? And what would that look like when coordinating with the mayor? Mr. Shipman, begin with you.
So I've had a number of conversations with former city council presidents, and one of them had a very good piece of advice. They said that your first hire, Doug, should be an infographic specialist, someone who can make charts to explain very complex issues. Because too often, we have so many numbers flying around that voters and even sometimes at City Hall, people can't understand what's happening. So what it would look like under me is making sure that we had very simple ways to explain what's happening in our government. I would consider myself the explainer in chief, helping council members understand complex policy, coordinating with the city, making sure that we have a very clear view of what's happening with money and with processes, and also going out and helping NPUs and neighborhood associations understand how the city works. So one is, it would be very data-based. Two, it would be very personal. And three, it would be very clear. Trust depends on our ability to show that the taxpayer money is well-spent. And that's how I would make sure that I lead a city council president.
Mike Russell, please answer the question.
My entire adult life, I've lived by one simple statement. I will not fail those whom I serve. That was true when I led your sons and daughters into combat and brought every one of them home safe six times. That was true when I took care of families against terrorism in Europe. And that's going to be true when I'm president of the Atlanta City Council. I will not fail those whom I serve. And this is all about serving you and making your city better because you deserve better. The other thing I will tell you is that leadership is about selfless service, not about privilege. And all too often, many of these politicians think it's all about them when it's really about you. The way you lead is by example. And that's what I have done my entire life. That's what I will do as city council president. And I'm asking you for your vote to make that a reality.
Sam Manuel, what would trust and transparency look like for you?
Well, one of the things we've raised in our campaign is the demand to open the books to inspections by organizations and committees elected by workers. Most of what occurs in city council, although it's often presented as opening things up to the public, really is to obfuscate everything, all of their procedures, their rules, the red tape. I've heard Mr. Shipman explain several times what would be his first hire. And it seems to escape him what he's really saying, that working people just, well, put it bluntly, just too dumb to understand politics and how things work in this city. Well, let's open the books. Then we'll see whether working people are able to really understand, whether they're able to see through what really takes place there, and whether they're able to pose an alternative course, which I think has to be workers' control.
Courtney English, trust and transparency.
Well, number one, I will act and lead by example on all issues of trust and transparency. I also believe that government works best when we have as many voices at the table as possible. And that means we have to bring government to people. And so we're going to look to create an equity scorecard, number one, that rates every issue before council on its ability to create a safer, stronger, more equitable Atlanta. We're also going to create a policy think tank that looks across the country at best practices and works to bring those best practices home, and then works in throughout our communities to deploy those best practices to address the issues that we face. We will also create a big tent. I will look to appoint non-voting volunteer committee members with specific expertise on each of our council committees. I believe that by adding additional voices into the process, we get a better result. We're also going to bring government to you by having council meetings out actually in your communities so you don't have to traverse to come down to City Hall all the time. We're going to bring government to you, open up the doors, and ensure you have a vote and a voice in the process.
Natalie Archibong, what does it look like for you?
Well, it looks like for me, some work that we've already done is a good foundation. I'm proud of the legislation that I passed that established a requirement for every committee to have on a quarterly basis, every commissioner come to every committee of purview and explain their budget, explain their benchmarks, and explain where there are challenges that need to be addressed. That's very good legislation that has helped the council look at next steps and ways to correct situations. The other legislation that I'm proud of is the hiring now of an inspector general. This is a person who is not political, is not hired or fired by the council, but is a second or third set of eyes to look at what's happening in our city, to hold all of the commissioners, the elected officials, and those who are doing your work, serving you, that they are being held accountable. This is just a start. We must continue to do more in the space of transparency. Open trust checkbook needs to be more robust, but it is all about being true to you. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Lisa, could I respond? Mr. Manuel called me up.
You have 30 seconds for rebuttal.
So I'm not saying that folks can't understand because they're not smart. They can't understand because we're all overwhelmed with data. Ms. Archibong mentioned the open checkbook system, and that's right, it puts an enormous amount of data out there with very few tools for anybody to actually be able to manipulate or to look into the data. We all have so many things to do in our lives. We're overwhelmed by the amount of volume. It's about making it so that people have insights, not just so they're overwhelmed by data, so that they can actually know what's happening.
Thank you. John Roche, you have the next question.
This will go to all of the candidates. We'll start with council member Archibong. You all have widely varying levels of campaign contributions and types of contributors who are seeking access to you if you win. What do your campaign contributors say about you and your campaign?
Well, I have a number of contributions that have come from voters who have voted for me for the last five terms, and that is a vote of confidence. And they are excited about having the opportunity to have someone that they have trusted for 20 years to go up to a higher office and continue to represent the citizens of Atlanta. I am honored to have been endorsed by Emily's List. That is an organization that is supportive of women's issues, and I am proud of that endorsement. And as a result of that, I'm getting contributions from those who believe in women reproductive rights. I'm proud of the legislation where we have now, for the first time in the city, we have a women's reproductive rights council, and we have appointed someone to represent council districts five, six, and seven. And so the other supporters that I've had have been people who've done business with the city. I'll just own that. And they know that I am all about good government, and they want to continue with strong, competent leadership. Thank you.
Courtney English, please answer the question.
Certainly. Well, I'm incredibly proud of the support that my campaign has garnered. My campaign is not sponsored by City Hall insiders or special interests or big business. My campaign has been a people-powered campaign. I'm especially proud of the folks who have continuously given $5, $10, $50 over and over again because they believe in our vision of building a city government that works for everyone. I'm especially proud to have received support from the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees ASME, which is the largest public service union in the city, one of the largest in the country, in fact. Those are the working folks in this city who do the hard work, the essential workers, every single day of keeping our streets clean, keeping our streets safe. And I'm honored that so many of them have given whatever they can to support my candidacy. And so ultimately, ultimately, my campaign contributions speak loudly to our vision for, again, building an inclusive city, a city that truly works for everyone.
Sam Manuel?
We're getting a response that even surprises me. Much of the contributions come from talking to workers door to door, on their doorsteps about what we face. And the response is largely rooted in the fact that workers are disappointed with and are more and more looking for an alternative from even the framework of the two main capitalist parties, the Democrats and Republicans, who present politics simply as what they do for us, rather than what we do for ourselves, how we're organized, how we raise our self-confidence. Our approach to fundraising is the same as the approach in other social movements that I've been involved in, that I've mentioned here. It has to come from the movement itself. And we will continue to do that, continue to talk about the politics. People are inspired by the idea that we raise, we need to break from both parties and form a labor party.
Sam Manuel, I promise you, it's not personal, but you are out of time again. Sorry about that. Mike Russell, please answer the question.
So those of you who know me know that I'm not part of the wine and cheese crowd. My supporters are common, everyday working folks who want a fair shake in this city. They want to see real change. They're tired of empty promises. They're tired of the establishment. They're tired of people who've been in this business forever and done nothing. The people who support my campaign, a lot of them don't have money. But what I do have, I believe more than anybody else, donors to this campaign, are people who are volunteers out there working their hearts out to make a change in this city. I've not had to pay anybody to knock on doors. I have not paid anybody to put up signs or to write postcards. It's all been volunteers because I stand with them because they know that you are my only priority. And it will be, so today, it will be when I'm city council president.
Doug Shipman?
When we started this campaign, I didn't have a political record. I only had a vision for Atlanta and the experiences of leadership that I could bring to the table. I looked up the numbers coming into this debate. 700 people have given us less than $100. Over 1,100 people have given us less than $200. There are bakers and artists, there are small business owners, there are retirees and students, there are business people. They're a big tent of Atlantans, just like you, who have the faith that a better city is possible and that we need fresh leadership. I think that that incredible array of donors shows that there is an appetite for change. There is an appetite for something that leads us in a new direction. And each of those donors is an act of faith in the vision for a better Atlanta. I have been humbled, and I think it shows tremendous momentum and an appetite for me as city council president.
Thank you all. Ricky, it's your turn to ask a question.
And I'd love to, again, hear from all of you. So we've heard about your professional experiences and your background. What are you like when you're not at work, when no one is looking? What is your personality? What makes you tick? Nadine, we can begin with you.
Well, this will sound like pandering, but one of my favorite stations is PBS. I am addicted to British mysteries and British comedy, and so it is one of the ways that I relax. I'm an avid reader. My dog Tokyo, who's in stage one renal kidney failure, is my love, and I love taking walks with him. And of course, my mom, who lives with me in her 90s, it's a pleasure to still have that generation of hope and experience in my home. And so family, walking my dog, looking at PBS, reading a great book, is the way Archibong likes to relax. And thank you.
Doug Shipman, what do you like at home?
So my wife is an emergency room doctor at Grady Hospital. We have a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old daughter. So we like to joke that we co-parent, we each single parent half the time, given our professional lives. So you'll find me going over recipes for our Instapot. I love to cook. I'm a big runner, and I like to run along the Belt Line and along Freedom Parkway. I also spend a fair bit of time reading as well, wide array of nonfiction and sometimes fiction, and just generally usually chasing our kids around, making sure that they're engaged, hanging out with family. I think that a lot of times when people see me out, sometimes they don't really recognize me because usually I'm somewhere behind that whole family crew. I also like to spend a lot of time on history. I'm a big history buff, and I love to delve into historical stories. It's one way that I tend to keep myself grounded in what's come before.
Courtney English, what do you like at home?
Well, I am newly married, so I, you know, my wife grew up in Ben Hill and graduated from Spelman College. I spend as much time with her as I possibly can. And candidly, spend a lot of time listening and doing what she tells me to do, and keeping a smile on my face about it. I love to cook. I have a big green egg, so I'm an egghead. And so that's one of my favorite pastimes. I'm a teacher at heart, and so any time I can spend with kids or children, it warms my heart. Our organization runs after-school programs, and so oftentimes, I spend time at those after-school programs, just hanging out with kids. And so finally, I'll say this, I'm an avid, avid sports fan. Go Dogs, we're the number one team in the country, but don't get too excited. We've got a long road ahead. So I would love to, I love to get out, watch the game. If you see me yelling at a TV, don't be alarmed, as normal as how I get down.
Sam Manuel, who are you at home?
Well, Nelson Mandela once, I believe one of his biographies is entitled, "The Struggle Is My Life." So when I'm relaxing, that's what I'm doing, the same thing that I do when I'm not relaxing. Reading, reading about the histories of struggles of working people, especially books published by Pathfinder Press, which I believe publishes the largest collection of writings of Malcolm X. Learning from people that have been involved in this by reading these books. I read the Milton newspaper, a labor newspaper that reports on all kinds of struggles that I've talked about tonight that are going on, from bakery workers to others, mine workers who've been out on strike now, I believe, like seven months in Alabama. And working with those that I'm involved with in the movement, that's the most relaxing time, discussing, debating, what do we do next? That's real politics, and that's what I'm trying to bring to working people in the course of this campaign.
Thank you. Mike Russell, who are you in your free time?
Pretty much what you see is what you get. I'm much more at home in a t-shirt and shorts than a tie. I'm a bit of an introvert, believe it or not, and I like to surround myself with a group of friends in a very relaxed, laid-back environment. I spend a lot of time with my husband. Someone asked me the other day, can you do anything without him? And I said, well, I could, I just don't want to. We have a very close relationship. He has been outstanding, amazing in supporting this campaign. Most of my neighbors know me because they see me walking our little dog Charlie that is a rescue that is now the sooner retention in the family. And I'm also a new grandfather, believe it or not. And unfortunately, I've only seen my granddaughter once because of COVID. But I'm online quite often, looking at pictures and trying to build a relationship long distance with my granddaughter.
Thank you, all of you. As you know, crime has been the top subject during this election cycle. Time is running out. You have 15 seconds to answer this next question. What would be the first thing you would do to combat the crime issue here in Atlanta? Mr. Shipman?
I think the first thing that we have to do is to make sure that our incentives are correct and our HR processes are working so that we can hire more police officers, especially those focused with mental health and domestic violence specialties, so that we can address those issues.
Mr. Russell?
As I said earlier, I have two bills that I'm preparing now to submit to the council on day one, hopefully unanimously, to tackle those venues and to get car break-ins under control starting first day.
Mr. Manuel?
Well, crime is a product of the system and values that we live under, and it can only be reversed when people are inspired to something different. As Malcolm X did and explained in his autobiography, he had to get rid of Detroit Red. But in order to do that, he had to find a reason and a cause through which to develop the self-discipline to change.
Mr. English?
I would transfer all administrative functions that are currently being performed by sworn police officers to other parts of the city. This will free up sworn cops from those administrative duties so that they can get out on our streets and go chase bad guys.
Nadine Archibong?
I would like to see implementation of legislation I have pending, which will require every gas station operator to have cameras on every gas pump in this city. It should not be dangerous and scary to put gas in your car. Thank you.
Very tedious question, and you all answered it within 15 seconds. Thank you. That is all the time we have for questions. Each candidate will now have 60 seconds for a closing statement. Each candidate will now have 60 seconds for a closing statement. Sam Manuel, you get the first closing statement.
Well, what I've talked about in this campaign is that the real solutions that we have, we have to begin to build the self-confidence, the fighting capacity in the organizations of our class that fights in our interests. And the most prominent amongst those is the labor movement. And right now, there is an uptick of response by working people. And since I've launched this campaign, I've been on the picket line with miners, I've been on the picket line with bakery workers, Nabisco strikers here in Atlanta. And workers are beginning to feel a bit more sense that we can fight back, we need to organize together. And that's what our campaign is trying to do. And the program proposals that we raise are not just a list of proposals, legislative proposals, but a course for working people to fight. And those who are interested in my campaign and supporting it can find me at the campaign headquarters, 777 Cleveland Avenue, and our phone number.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel.
528-7828.
Courtney English, you may give your closing statement.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for this wonderful dialogue. You know, our city is in a moment of crisis. Crime is on the rise, housing prices are on the rise, gaps in city services are all on the rise. Today, there's not a neighborhood in our city that doesn't feel left out or unheard. And 11 years ago, 11 years ago, our school system was in a similar moment of crisis, where we were dealing with the largest cheating scandal in American history. Having led that turnaround, we raised our graduation rates to record high, sent more kids off to college. We've built and created more affordable housing through the work I've done in the nonprofit sector. I've had the ability to learn from this city, that there's nothing wrong with Atlanta that cannot be solved by what's right with Atlanta. And in this moment of crisis, I'm asking for your vote, because I know I have what it takes, to turn this city around and put Atlanta back on track. Atlanta is an audacious city, and it's time that we get back to that spirit where everybody, no matter who you are, no matter what you look like, can live a choice-filled life. That's the kind of leadership that this campaign represents.
Nadine Archibong, please give your closing statement.
Thank you. I am a daughter of Atlanta. My mom and dad met at Morehouse and Spelman College and decided to raise their family here. My dad was the second African-American under the DeKalb County Commission. My mom is a retired Atlanta public school teacher. I'm a product of APS, and so is my daughter. Services is in my DNA. It would be my honor to continue to serve you. As you've heard, our city is in crisis. This is not a time for on-the-job training. This is time for experienced, strong, proven leadership. You know, they say often that the form of government in Atlanta is a strong, mere form of government. I disagree. We can have a strong legislative body. What does that mean? We can have a legislature that provides that check and balance through the city council. I'm the only one on this stage who has ever served on council, who's ever been on a committee, who's ever chaired a committee. For an Atlanta that is safe, and a legislature and a city council that is strong, vote for Nadine Archibong. Thank you.
Mike Russell, it is your turn.
You know, our city is at a crossroads, and you, the voters, will make a decision which way we go. And I'm offering you leadership for change into the right direction. Of all the candidates on this stage, I have the most experience in the areas that count: law enforcement, public safety, budgeting, city services. I've done those things well before. I want to have the opportunity to do them well again for you here in Atlanta. You deserve better. You pay for these things, and you have not received them. I want to be your voice in City Hall to make this city function for you. You know, we are the cradle of the nonviolent civil rights movement, and we've got to live up to that legacy. It is time to bring people together so that we can solve the problems that face our city. I'm asking you for your vote and your support, so that together, we can make this city that we all love safer and better for everybody, starting with our children.
Thank you. Doug Shipman, you get the final closing statement.
Well, I want to thank everybody for tuning in. You clearly care about Atlanta because you've spent your time listening to our vision. 10 years ago, 15 years ago, I spent a vast decade building the Center for Civil and Human Rights, a place to talk about our past, to shape our future, and to showcase the King Papers. Many thought that it couldn't be done, and I led the effort to make it happen. Over the course of the last few months, I've met thousands of you on front porches, back porches, and on Zoom. You've shared with me your hope for Atlanta, but your feeling of hopelessness, your feeling of doubt about our future. You want someone who can actually make the city work. Of all the people on this stage, the Committee for Better Atlanta said that I was clearly the most qualified person. You want someone who can work across the lines of race and religion and neighborhood. I've done that before, and I'll do it again. My name is Doug Shipman, and I ask you to vote for me as a faith that together, we can build the Atlanta we want.
Thanks to all of you. You survived, made it to the end unscathed. Thank you so much for being here. That concludes our debate. We like to remind voters that Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd, and early voting has begun. Our thanks to the candidates and to our wonderful panel of journalists. We also like to thank the Atlanta Press Club for arranging today's debate. For more information about the Atlanta Press Club and all of the debates they will host this election season, visit atlantapressclub.org. I'm Lisa Ram. Thanks for joining us for the Atlanta Press Club Louder Make Young Debate Series. Have a good evening.